Flag, and we'll ask Denny from Treston.
Pledge your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Denny.
We'll ask for Tim Probst to come up now, and he's from First General Baptist Church down on what we all call Rock Cursor Hill.
Yes.
He's going to lead us in a prayer. Before he starts, I just want to mention and recognize our city attorney, Earlene Whitaker Wilson. Her father passed away this week, so we want to send our condolences to the family, and arrangements will be forthcoming, but I think they're this weekend, aren't they, Lori?
Yes, I just looked it up a while ago. I think visitation is Friday from, did I say three to eight maybe?
Yeah.
David, and then the service is at Broadway Missionary Baptist Church on Saturday.
So we want to just be sure and send our condolences to Earlene and the family, and with that, we'll turn it over to Brother Probst.
It's by our heads. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Forgive us of our debts, and forgive our debtors. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of the regular meeting minutes on October 16th, 2023. If there aren't any questions on those, I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes.
Can I make a motion?
Motion by Clayton.
I'll second.
Second by Gina, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is approval and ratification of bills. Those were sent out, the minutes and the bills were sent out last week to everyone, so if there are no questions or issues with those, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bills.
So move to approve the bill.
Okay. Billy, it's the second by Clayton, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, guys. Visitors wise, I know Denny has got a presentation that he wants to make to Billy here in a minute. Do we have anybody before we do that in the audience that wants to address the council? Adrian, come on up from up here.
Hey, how are y'all doing? So my name's Adrian Board. I've lived in Litchfield my whole life. A lot of you, I see a lot of familiar faces. I've got something here to bring to you all on behalf of the people that live in the Highland Terrence Shawna Drive area. So I'll just go off here. So I bought my first house in Highland Park neighborhood when my youngest child was born. That was nine years ago, so I was like 21 years old. Then it was a beautiful place. I raised him in a wonderful community. We played outside, swang, learned new sports, and went on new adventures. For three years, this was our home, and we really enjoyed it there. It was really nice. We only encountered a few bad eggs. There were a couple instances of reckless driving and drugs at the skate park, which we all know about. When I talked to these people, I went out on my own. I did not contact the authorities or police. I'd just go out on my own, like, hey, man, you care to like, you know, cool it down? Don't be doing this when my kids are down there. And that took care of it. But now things have changed, so since then, I have now purchased Landon Kessinger's old home right there, backs up to the courthouse. I bought this home on a stated dead end road with my wife, and we welcomed our 14-month-old son in this house. Since moving in last summer, we have had crackheads, freeloaders, drifters, and speed racers up and down our road, an increased number of just inconsiderate people and drivers. I'm not knocking this beautiful community, but this has come to a head. Not just me, but all, everybody on our street has agreed to sign a petition for us. This needs to be a dead end road. My son has been caught a MF'er by somebody driving by last week. If I could have caught him, I would have, but I had just stepped inside and he went out, not coming in, not while he was shooting basketball in our own private driveway. On another occasion, his friend was called a, somebody that would be overweight with curse words, you know what I'm saying? I got it written down here if you want to read my paper. Both of these kids are 10 years old. At the same time, I was in the backyard, and his mother and my wife heard this. We have had people walking through our yards, sitting on our swings in our yard, with the police were called in this instance across from my residence. As a community, we've had enough. People pull out of the park, onto the street with no regard for the stop sign that has been posted or the dead end. Often, they are revving their engines and flooring it up and down the hill with no regards to the street or the speed limit sign. Not only has this been, not only is there absolutely no reason for this, but they are not paying attention to their surroundings, like somebody that would live on the street. You know, if you live on the street, you know who lives where and who's got kids and stuff, and you pay attention to that, but these people are not. They don't, they're not from around there, and it's not like it's young punks all the time. A lot of times, yesterday, two people, I know they're at least my age, what are they doing there at skate park? They're not skating, they're not shooting basketball, we know what they're doing. It has become unsafe for kids to walk up and down the street. There's two boys that live at the very end of my street, and they came up yesterday. I have my oldest son every other day, I have joint custody, and they came up, and I let them. They played in my yard until about, it was dark last night, just playing, and I want them to feel safe being able to come up to my street or up to my house on our same shared street, even in our own driveway. There is no reason for the gate at the end of the road to be open. No utilities use this access, including the electric company, sanitation, or I know sanitation don't because they back down our road, the postal service does not because they turned around down at the very end of the street at David's house. Any public services that require access to the park may still have access via a two-lane road by the courthouse. That's a lane, that's a striped road over there with a sidewalk for walkers as well. Or I propose that they could hold a key to a shared lock on the work access gate, similar to that used by other utility services at gated communities such as those around the lakes or other places that utilities use. We love this community, which is why we moved back here. I was so excited when I saw that house of Landon Kessinger's old home back for sale because I was like, I'm gonna buy it. I sold my house, my wife sold our other house, and we bought this place. However, we bought this property in part also with the understanding that the posted dead end road would mean the street sign would be upheld. The dead end street comes with several perks, including safety, security, peace and quiet, associated with no through traffic. A dead end street means a street that ends so that there are only one way in and one way out. Also, a home on a dead end street also comes with a higher price tag, which is what we paid and our property value, you know what I'm saying? But it was worth it to us. I also have here, before you all comment back to me, some possible excuses why we want to have that gate open. Some would say, such as the Elvis Shane concert, that was a big concert, you know, for Grayson County, but at that same time, there was a cop sitting at the very end of my road and routing them the other way. He said, we don't want your house road to be flooded with traffic, so they did not allow no passer through traffic. So as far as concerts, there's no reason for my road to be open, as well as utilities, like I already mentioned. But then, what I've heard from the other neighbors is that we're going to talk about walkers, cyclists, and pedestrians. Everybody knows I love to exercise just as much as anybody. But the courthouse road has a sidewalk and a two-lane road providing ample access to the park and trails. If our road was to be treated as it should, or as at least everybody is treating it, then it would, well, excuse me one second, then it would be closed if it should. But also, if the excuse is for the such stated as walkers and cyclists, then it needs to be changed to a stated as the International Federation of Pedestrian States, a living end street, to make it a filtered permeability such as a gate or a passageway for pedestrians and cyclists, and a specific entrance just for that, but still, no cruisers and senseless drivers up and down our road to make it unsafe for us to live at. If that were to be the choice, then new signage needs to be posted, and that would allow access into the park via foot or bike traffic but remain closed to passerby vehicles.
Yeah, we had a discussion this afternoon with someone from county judge's office, and they thought that the gate belonged to the city. I think it belongs to the county. We're gonna find, I'll find out tomorrow for sure. I know the gate has been closed at times because I've walked over there.
Through COVID, it was closed the whole time and stuff, and a lot of times back when I used to live there several years ago. But also-
I know they didn't want to allow any access through there with the concert, and I'm sure the next concert will be the same, so.
Right, yeah, and we greatly appreciated that, but we would just appreciate the same forthgong as far as just a bunch of punks just drive by there. If you live there, you would just be outraged with it. It's ridiculous. People just, yesterday, they're having, I believe, probably a veteran thing, I would say, down there at the park. There was a big American flag posted down there yesterday and stuff. I said, I bet they got something going on, the lights were on. Two, three people go down there, turn around, all the way up the road, at least 35 miles an hour, you know? It's just-
So let's just claim it and shut the gate.
Well, she was gonna check with Kevin, but I think knowing Kevin and talking to him before, I think he-
I don't know that it would never be used, but I can understand where you're at.
If, yeah, if for some reason somebody needs to go by their-
I lived there 20 years, so I understand exactly.
I totally get it, and it just-
And if it's a work access thing, that's one thing, but public traffic is different, so we'll try our best to see that it gets locked, it stays locked unless they're working there or-
Okay, and if it helps out, everybody on my street said they will sign a paper or they will come to the meeting if they have to. I said, well, just let me go see if I can take-
I don't think you'll have to.
Let me see if I can take care of it.
I don't think we'll have to go to that. I think it'd just be, once we talk to the judge, I think it'll just be-
Well, we would greatly appreciate it, we really would, on behalf of everybody that lives on Shawna Drive and also the next street over, because there's several little kids that also come over to play at our house.
Yeah, I've got family on the next street over, so.
Correct, yeah.
But we'll try to get that taken care of, and if, you know, if you get a lot of people going down and turning around, Chief Riley can sit some guys over there maybe for a while, maybe check into it.
Is there a no turnaround sign there too?
There's a, I don't think so, but there is a dead end road sign and a speed limit sign posted, and that's, I mean, really, the dead end sign's all that really needs to be posted.
Well, they could probably help you out on no turnaround.
That would be, you know, just a dead end road. Like it says, I mean, because if you lived on a dead end road, I mean, and you buy a house and it's opened up just to the traffic that we're getting, I mean, property value just, you know, I just paid $2,400 in property taxes today, not counting my city taxes, which was 400, I believe, $98. That's almost $3,000 in taxes I paid, and I feel rightfully so on being aggravated about this.
City was a bargain, wasn't it?
Oh, I was taking a guess, yeah. Yeah.
Me and Adrian go back a ways.
But I do, I appreciate all y'all's time, and I was trying not to get upset about nothing. I appreciate that, and if you all need this or something, you're more welcome to it, but-
That's fine, Lori will have it in the minutes, and we'll, if I don't talk to Kevin tonight, I'll talk to him tomorrow for sure. She was gonna check with him and see, but it needs to be closed, it's, so.
Thank you all, you all.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Anyone else in the audience that needs to address the council for anything? Denny, I'll turn it over to you, and Billy.
I guess Billy would probably walk down here. This is for the firefighters, and explains a lot if Tim's not here, he's fighting a fire, we're gonna give it to Tim. This helmet is probably 100 years old, and it belongs to Herschel Thompson, who was the firefighter here at Litchfield in 1930, 1965. His grandson donated to the Historical Society and Grayson County Historical Society, and donated to the Firehouse, and Colonel Boyd wrote out a statement, I'm gonna read it, for his grandfather. My grandfather, Herschel Thompson, was always proud, had been a long time volunteer firefighter in Litchfield, both as a resident and local businessman. He considered it civic duty at the time when local firefighters was dependent, local firefighting was dependent on volunteers. But his more than 30-year service has also laid our love, as he told fellow neighbors, friends, and associates in keeping Litchfield safe. As a young boy, I remember answering the tower, calling within a few times, and dashing off to the fire station with records and side device. He never hesitated to answer the call. As his oldest grandson, I received his fire number on his past, called it occupied a place of honor in our house for the past 32 years. I believe it's time for granddad's helmet to be returned to Litchfield where it can serve as a piece of history to those who serve now. I'm honored to see it back in place by my grandfather's love, which has always been very meaningful to me. Colonel Boyd, Colonel US Army retired. And as a side note, if you ever get a chance to listen to Colonel Boyd talk, you can take an opportunity to listen, but he won't present this to the Firehouse.
Thank you on behalf of the Firehouse, and we have a display case.
Thank you, guys. And I'll take this opportunity to understand Mr. Boyd, Colonel Boyd, views some of our meetings occasionally, and if you are ever in the area and have time, please stop by City Hall and visit with us, and we'd love to get to know you and maybe hear some more history from when your granddad was wandering these streets around here, so you have an open invitation anytime. Okay. Next on the agenda is second and final reading on an ordinance related to the closure of a public way located at 32 Public Square.
Mayor, Tyler's gonna read that real quick.
Okay.
Whereas the city of Litchfield has a duty to maintain certain roads and public ways within the boundaries of the city of Litchfield, and whereas a public way can be closed if it poses a danger to public safety, now therefore be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows. The alleyway located between West Main Street to West Walnut Street, which dissects through the property located at 32 Public Square, shall be closed as a public way for transportation. The property owners of 32 Public Square, Litchfield, Kentucky, 42754 Robin and Charlie Elmore, are in agreement with said alleyway being closed to the public. Their waiver and consent is attached and marked attachment A duly enacted on the sixth day of November 2023 after first being read on the 16th day of October 2023, said ordinance to be effective upon publication.
Okay. And everybody's familiar with the alley he's talking about, I'm guessing, so if there aren't any questions or concerns about that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the second reading.
So move, I'd like an option.
Motion by Tootie. Second by Clayton, all in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna roll call.
Roll call, okay.
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, guys. Okay, next down on the item is approval of the Manufacturing Week proclamation. We did have a couple of proclamations that we did this week on behalf of Manufacturing Week and the Grayson County High School Cougar Football Team. You have copies of these in your packet. I'll entertain-
After we read either one of them, Mayor, we'll just need first and second.
Okay.
All in favor on them?
I'll entertain a motion to approve the Manufacturing Week proclamation.
So move.
Second by Tootie, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The other proclamation we did was for, like I said, for the Grayson County High School football team who won their first game and get to host another game this Friday night to move further, and I guess maybe this will be as far as they've been in the state tournament or-
You know, they've changed all them bracketries up since we was-
Very confusing to me looking at it now, so.
It's very confusing, I think so too.
I think they're in the top 16 now.
Yeah, that sounds right, and that's big stuff for our school.
Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion to accept that one.
I'll accept, make the motion. I'll second.
Second by Gina, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, guys. The approval of September 2023 financial statement that we received. The last, got that the last meeting, didn't we, Lori?
No, I emailed it out Friday with our packet.
Friday, okay. All right, that's what we've got in front of us here.
And if you haven't had a chance to look over it, we can always delay it over to the next meeting.
Okay. Are there any questions concerning that financial statement?
Did you see anything outstanding in?
No, it all looked about normal to me. Sabrina didn't have any concerns about it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the September financial statement.
All right, motion by Billy, second by Clayton, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, entertain a motion to, for us to enter into executive session via KRS 6148101F concerning salary proposal and employment. Anybody would-
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Clayton, second by Billy, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to come back into regular session.
I make a motion.
Mr. McClain?
Second.
Second, Batuthi, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, during executive session, we discussed some commission and board pay, and we don't have any decisions at this moment. We just kind of made some discussion. We'll look at it at a later date.
Okay. Thank you, Lori. Okay, we'll start with unfinished business. Code enforcement amended ordinance for condemned property. Tyler, do you have something on that?
I believe Arlene's still working on that. We haven't been able to finalize anything, so we'll get back with her whenever she makes it back in.
Okay, thank you. And next is ordinance related to city administrative officer has been updated to read correctly on our code of ordinances online.
Yeah, that is one that Denny had brought up to me, and I think you all talked about it maybe at the last meeting, under the city administrative officer. It had police instead of policy, and so I did confirm that our ordinance says policy, and I sent those into American Legal, and they had it updated the next day, so that is correct online now.
Okay. Okay, any other unfinished business? Billy?
No, sir.
Terry?
Is this also considered old business?
Sure.
Yes.
All right. I just have a couple of questions about the big pickleball courts at firefighter park. You know, they've really done a lot of work there. First question is, is the land, is the park that's cleared, is that the entire pickleball court? Like, that's it? All four of them are going to go in that area? Yes?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Should I ask Tammy these? Since she's here. Should I ask Tammy these questions since she's here?
Well, you can't, yeah.
They can't find me today.
All right, so that is the entire pickleball court?
Yes.
All right, next question is, the signs that are posted at that park along with others say that the park is closed from dusk until dawn, so how is that going to affect our pickleball players?
We'll probably have to change the sign for that, but we do plan on putting lights on a timer, so it, they won't be there at all hours.
Okay, so you'll have to have a sign that says park or playground, close is closed from dusk?
Yeah, it'll probably, yeah, separate it, the playground will be closed from dusk to dawn.
So something that you probably need to be thinking about is who's going to enforce that as far as the playground equipment goes, because there are a lot of people over there, especially during the summer.
It's hard to enforce. I mean, over there, you can go look at the videotapes, and there's all kinds of stuff going on over there at the park, so that just is something that has to be patrolled and catch as you can.
And the bathrooms. I know that that was, that was a big, one of the big reasons why the pickleball courts, I mean, were voted on to be there, and I completely get it. What time are the bathrooms typically cleaned and locked now?
Right now, they're locked around eight o'clock at night. I took, Shai Whitman now works for us, which I'm very excited about, because I felt like firefighters at park and DeWitt was not getting enough attention that they needed, so she's over there, and she has been cleaning them and taking care of them, and she unlocks them and locks them.
Well, I was over there this afternoon and went in one of the restrooms, and I was super excited that we have a soap dispenser and actual soap that comes out of it. So if, I think I heard where maybe that, I know that the lights are going to be on a timer.
Correct.
And did I hear possibly 10 o'clock?
I don't think we've actually decided on a timeframe yet. I don't think a lot of people that play pickleball will probably be up wanting to play at 10 o'clock at night, but.
I don't know, we have kids. I mean, I don't have kids, but I mean.
Summer may be different, but I think in the.
It's taught in our schools and through the PE programs also.
During school time, I think it, I don't think it'll be that late at night. It's, it's going to be a learning experience, so.
My only, my only question that pertains to the bathroom is, are you going to continue to lock and clean the bathrooms at 8:00 PM, or are you going to keep the bathrooms open until pickleball court lights are off?
That'll be something that we'll have to approach at that time. We'll, we'll figure that out.
But you're also going to have to have somebody to go out and.
Well, that's what Shai does right now. She goes out there at seven o'clock every night, between seven and eight every night to empty the trash and lock the bathrooms.
Okay, and how, I know that the mayor had mentioned that the walking track is going to have to be adjusted some because of this? Is that correct?
Not necessarily because of this.
Not because of this.
Well, it's, it's going to have to have some work done on it.
Yeah, the backside of the track stays wet most of the time. Of course, it's been a very dry year this time, but most of the time it stayed wet or water and stuff on it, so it had been in the plans for a year or so to move it to the backside of where the trees are, and we actually cut that in today.
On the other side of the trees?
Yes, on the high part of the backside.
That is kind of adjacent to the backyards of Cypress Subdivision?
Yes.
So that's where the, the new improved track is going to go.
Yeah, and you can actually see now, we actually cut all the sign off of it today and got it ready to rock, so hopefully when they're doing pickleball court, we'll get them to be able to do that too, and get both of them locked up.
We can work on those simultaneously, and while we're at it, can you go ahead and put that walkway from the pavilion where the bathrooms are up to the two areas where the swings are? You have the walkways that lead to both playground equipments on each side. There is not a walkway that goes from the pavilion to the two sets of swings, and we had talked about it earlier. There's an ADA, a handicap accessible swing on that swing set. There's no way to get a wheelchair through, from the pavilion, down to the swings, over the little hump, into the mulch, and then get the child up there. And that's been a request from several parents.
That's something that'll have to be put in our budget for that.
I'll have to look at it too, see.
Yeah, go ahead and go out there and look, but I mean, if you're already going to have blacktop out there, and you're going to be working on the track, that would be a good investment for that park.
It would be hard to blacktop that, because they blacktop nine foot wide. It is the smallest that they do, so we'll have to pour it out of concrete, and you'll put a sidewalk to it and do it that way, but we'll take a look at it and see if there's something that we can do while we're doing all the work out there.
And are you going to be removing the trees that are, I think it's between the pickleball courts and where the track is now? The trees are going to get to stay?
Yeah.
And do we have any time estimate on how long the big piles of dirt that they removed when they dug out the pickleball courts, there's these great big piles. Do we have any idea on how long those piles may still be there?
As soon as they get the rock put in and the blacktop done, we're going to use that dirt to dress up around the pickleball court.
Since it is a playground, and there are a lot of kids over there, guess what kids love to do?
All right.
Climb on the big piles of dirt. Is there any way that we can get some, some of that mesh netting, the plastic netting fence, whatever, just to go around that? I mean, just as a safety precaution?
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Tootie?
When you're talking about pickleball courts, we don't have anything budgeted for lighting at all yet, do we?
Well, with the amount of money that the tourism has given us, we have, I think we're going to have enough left over for lighting.
Okay.
So.
Just have to wait and see.
Yeah, which we'll be looking at, and you know, we have, Terri Ashley can do the wiring for us, so it'll help and help install it, Public Works, so I think it'll help keep the budget, keep us within the budget of it.
Okay.
What it looks now, Tootie, is we can do everything with the tourism.
For that amount?
It's going to be everything, even have a little bit left over, hopefully, but you know how that goes.
I know.
They've ran into some extra costs that wouldn't anticipate it. Wes can speak to that. On the grade was about what?
It's about 15,000, I think, on, at the rock, just due to the elevation out there.
It's got to be built up, doesn't it?
It's going to have to be built up about two and a half, three feet on the lower side.
Yes.
And that's where the dirt will go once they do that, but yeah, Scotty's gave us price on it, and you know, they're going to, I'm hoping they'll start it this week with the rock down.
Yeah.
So we've got everything on our end done. We're just waiting on them now.
Tammy, the benches, I know that they approved the bid, I think we had one bid the last meeting for the benches for the pickleball court. Is there any way that they are going to look anywhere similar, even with the color scheme of the benches that are already at firefighter park?
Yeah, we're going to match the same colors that are there at the playground, the red, black, and yellow. It's going to stay all the same.
All right, thank you.
In fact, we're thinking about trying to do the courts the same color, if we could.
Cool.
Again, hopefully we'll have enough money to do all that the way it looks now.
Tootie, you got yet?
No, thank you.
Clayton, unfinished business?
No.
Gina?
I got two things. Wesley, I got asked again about Robert's Court. It's on your, on your radar?
Yes.
Okay, and then I think I had asked before, Mayor, about the automated service for announcements, and I noticed there was a thing we had gotten, GoGov was an option, and I didn't know if we had checked on that.
We actually set up an appointment today to meet with them and talk to them about, that's a, that's an app-based thing for phone, iPads, things like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Monday, I think we're meeting with them nine or 10. Monday, I think we're meeting with them nine or ten.
I can't remember which one it was.
One of those times. They changed it on us. Well, we made our mind up and then they changed our minds for us, so.
I think it's at ten o'clock.
And you're, you're welcome, anybody's welcome to come in and sit in on that, with Lori and I if you want to, see if you think it's advantageous for us to, to look at something like that. Gina, anything else?
Yep, that's all.
Denny?
Uh, I forgot to ask Lori, our, our agenda on the website now?
It is on the website. It's very cumbersome to get to. I, I worked with Heather at Heartland Communication to make it a little bit easier Friday, 'cause one of the links she clicked on and it said you couldn't get to it, so she's got both of the links working now, but you have to click on off the, the homepage. You have to go down to where it says minutes and agenda, and you can click either on the calendar or the words minutes and agenda now. When you click on that, then you have to click into the agenda folder and then you have to find the agenda. So, we're gonna have to simplify that. I'm not, I'm not a fan of it at all.
Okay, thanks, thanks for working there. The other one, I forgot to ask, Wes, during meeting, did we find anything about the contract with K U? R E C C about fixing the lights?
No.
Anytime that they get?
Actually tried to call three or four times and I don't know if he's just screening my calls or what, and I haven't heard back from K U yet at all.
You're a pretty good size guy, maybe you could just go.
I don't know. Yeah, I just gotta find it.
Thanks.
You're talking about the contract, like with the ballparks with the, the.
Yeah, and they have to fix the lights, that we report the lights out. Remember, we talked about that.
I was on.
The timeline.
Yeah, okay.
One of, one of the providers was pretty good about it, but the other one wasn't so good about fixing lights that once they were out.
Yeah.
That's all, Mayor, thanks.
Lori, do you have anything?
I don't have any old business.
Okay. Tammy?
I do.
Did I forget you earlier?
Got me on, up here where you can see me. Um, just some park updates. So, currently, we're working on Christmas in the park and the businesses. We'll start setting up their displays on November sixteenth, and they must be completed by November twenty-ninth. Mark your calendars, because light up Litchfield will be December first, that Friday, starting at five. We'll have Lawler and Wookiee students performing along with Santa, and then we'll light up the park. We'll also have the trolley, as we usually do, bringing them up from softball all the way up to the pavilion. Um, as I said earlier, we hired Shai Whitman to help take care of firefighters and B G DeWitt Park. And if you go by there and look, you'll see that she's making tremendous progress in the short time that she's been there. The trail expansion is almost completed. We just have a few little details to finish, um, and it will be submitted to the state for completion. If you haven't had a chance to go check it out, I highly recommend just walk it. It's absolutely beautiful, and we've had such great response feedback for it. Um, and then we talked about the pickleball courts, so. That's my park update. Any questions?
What was the length of the new addition?
The length is one point, it's almost exactly as this other one, almost one point ten miles, just a little bit short.
It is nice. I took a stroll, me and, the dog took a stroll around it recently.
Tammy, when will the batting cages, are they gonna?
The issue with the batting cages is where we wanna install them, will encumber the one place for the disc golf. I know that they knew that, that was just temporary, that they may have to move them, so we just gotta try to figure out how we can please both parties without causing an uproar.
And there, what, are there four batting cages?
There are four batting cages side by side. And they were gonna go right there between softball and baseball, between the new trail and the trail that takes you right up.
So, they're eas- I mean, they're easily accessible by both baseball and softball?
Correct.
Perfect.
Anything else for Tammy?
I'm good, thank you.
Wes, David?
No, sir.
Tyler?
No, I'll catch you on the next go around.
Okay, new business, Billy?
Uh, I'd just like to, uh, mention Mr. Brooks here in our audience today, that, that he's helping with some housing that he's building in our community. Well-needed, and I appreciate you being a part of the community, Kevin, that, to show. I watched your presentation to the Utilities Commission, and I think they'll do their due diligence to, to help you in any way they can, and just thank, thank you for providing for the community.
Well, I appreciate you guys. You all do a great job.
Appreciate you. I'll add to that, um, just, just a little bit, that we, we all appreciate the things you, I know you're very active in the community as well as other things, building and stuff like that, so we, we appreciate that. We do appreciate it. Those are the things we like to hear.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, Terry?
I have a couple of things. Um, I'm not really sure if we can get an answer to this. But, uh, Wes, how would we go about getting a turn signal at the interse- at the light, at the intersection of North Main and West Walnut? A left-turning signal? You've got the turning lane right in front, front of the ambulance.
I don't know.
Who would, who would we contact? That would be good. I've had, it, it's ironic, and I had probably six people within a week and a half, random people, ask about that one light.
Also, there are Mill Street and Salt River Road. That, that, that really gets congested. When you're trying to turn out Salt River Road, coming up Mill Street, going towards the school, especially on school time, but it's, there've been several wrecks there. Course, the wrecks everywhere, but I mean, but there's no turning. Turning light.
I can ask, I mean, I'll let, please let me know if I have a guy.
And how we would go about getting one?
Uh, that'll be the process. Whenever I ask, I'll definitely have a filter or a ditch or something as possible. Uh, release a request, I might, maybe they'll send a request to have a different type of source. Process will go through it. You know, if, and if they tell me right, a hundred dollars, I'll ask, they'll then, there is no process.
Right.
I'll try to find it out, see what, see what they tell me.
David, do you have any update on any type of grants for your flock system that we need?
We, we are actually, uh, have you, have you talked to your, I think your daughter was doing one?
Yeah, we've found two or three opportunities that, that might be able to help us with, uh, that nothing has, has placed out yet.
He actually has access to a grant writer, which apparently is very good, so I've just been passing all the flock information to him that I'm giving. That's becoming very popular.
That is something that I was not aware of until I sat in on a budget committee meeting. And then the more that I've learned about it and the more I've researched on it, I think that it would be very beneficial to you all and our whole entire community.
The mayor sent me numerous, numerous videos of different applications for the flock cameras. They're, they're very good, and lots of communities are jumping on.
They are. And I have a question for Tyler. Would it be beneficial for the code enforcement to meet more than quarterly? What, what's your thoughts on that? Or do you think it's set up just right?
I mean, it depends on how far we wanna take, what we're, we've got on the books, if we wanna add anything or not right now. I mean, quarterly seems to be working out okay, but we have talked about in, in the beginning that if there was a need to meet more often, that we would definitely entertain that.
So, you'll let us know?
Do you feel like there's an, an issue with the way we are right now?
No, I was just wondering, uh, if, if there was too much time? Like, in between whenever you do your processes that you have to go through? Uh, i- is there too much time in between the end of that and your next code enforcement meeting?
Uh, for the things that we have to meet on, I don't think so, 'cause we, we don't have to meet on everything that we do through code enforcement. If we do a petition to condemn a property in order demolition, we have to meet on that. Um, once the decision's made, they have forty-five days to begin their process to tear down a structure. And if they don't, then we go ahead and we'll either tear it down or we'll take bids and have somebody tear it down. So, by the time that ninety days rolls around to our next meeting, then that process is complete by that time, and.
So, it's spaced out about right?
I think so. Um, the only other time that we would have to have a meeting is if somebody was to appeal a decision that was sent out. Like, if I send somebody a citation, they wanted to appeal it, but just the normal day-to-day violations, we don't have to meet on that through the board, so.
Sounds good. Now, I have one more thing. Um, and the ma- I'm pretty sure that the mayor has probably been through this area at the animal shelter. Uh, you and, you did a really good job at the, um.
The benefit.
The benefit?
Fundraising benefit.
That was really good. They, they're really working hard to raise funds. But, one thing that, I mean, if you look at the budget, the only thing that they asked for, the animal shelter asked for was a shipping container to store food and a camera system for the shelter. That was it.
They've got both those.
Yeah, but I mean, that was it, and that was pri- that wa- that was submitted prior to the director, our current director, um, taking over, and there were several issues that probably should've been addressed and included in on that that were not. One of them being, and I, she, uh, called me down there and I went down there and she listed over, you know, everything that needed to be done, and I said, what's your number one? Because we can't do, we can't even talk about everything, but what is your number one? And there's an area down there called the puppy room. Alright, so the puppy room is used as kinda like a birthing room for the dogs, um, to give birth in. Uh, it's also used for puppies that are brought in that we know are not vaccinated, and they can't be mixed in with the other dogs. That room, uh, has zero ventilation in it. There are two or three vent-type things in the ceiling. And there is a switch that no one knows what it goes to, but the, uh, the vents, there's no air coming in or out, there's no air circulating at all, and also, there is no natural light being brought into that room. It has no windows. So, I mean, for example, whenever she took me back there, um, the workers before that had shut the lights off, so the dogs were in a completely dark room with, um, zero ventilation, and it smells. Like, the odors that are coming out of that room go through, down the hallway, into the office, that whole entire first building, the, the building on the right, the odors are coming from that room. Uh, so, I told her that I would come to you all and bring up the idea of, of, I don't know, even know where we start as far, I mean, she said they would love to have two windows. And that's really not asking a lot, and it's a metal building.
Yeah.
But, not only the two windows, they need some type of ventilation to get air circulating in and out. I mean, that's not healthy for our workers who are working in that building. It's definitely not healthy for those animals.
Is it heated and?
No, there is no heat or air in that room, but they leave the door open, uh, from the office to help take some cooler or warmer air back there.
We can go down and check on that. Scotty and I tomorrow, um, I'm, I've not had him mention that to me, so.
Yeah, go down and check it out, um.
Windows shouldn't be an issue, and fans shouldn't really be, maybe something in place that switches.
Talk to your west, they just come down and do it.
Yeah. So.
Uh, the county, uh, animal officer.
Yeah.
Contacted me last week, uh, we sized the, uh, thing, a bit like the thing, and also for a couple of windows. And he should talk with David, David Allen, David.
Okay.
About helping us with that ventilation that, that's, that's underway here.
Okay, um, our director is going to be out of commission for the next few weeks, beginning, hopefully, beginning Thursday, but could be anytime, so if you all could speed it up as much as possible. I know that the budget's probably gonna have to be adjusted somehow, some way, but, I mean, we've gotta take care of the animals. We have to take care of animals, and we have to take care of our workers.
Yeah, and I've encouraged Christina that anytime she has anything like that to let us know, but I'm not, she's not brought that up, so.
I think she was just trying to get some finishing touches on, on things before, yeah.
Yeah.
She has to step away. Alright, that's all I have.
Okay. Tudy? New business? Clayton?
Yes, uh, out on Fountain View Drive West, uh, I got a call from, uh, Betty Jo Hayes Decker out there in front of her house. You know the house I'm talking about?
Always at the end on the right.
Yeah, always. They've got a big hole out there in front of their house. And they was wondering. It's what, what she said. She was supposed, she was supposed to be here tonight, but she'd said, she'd said contacted somebody about it. I don't, she never did tell me who, but, uh.
Scotty and I were out there just a few days ago, and I didn't notice anything like that. I have heard of mention that there's a property owner at the end of that road turning around and calling them asking everything. That there's no homes or anything there. I, we didn't really check that out, but I didn't notice any, anything out of the way on the main road they're going in. But, we drove up both ends of it.
Uh, she said, um, got a hole that needs patching in front of their house. Is what.
I'll check it out, see.
Okay.
And if it's something we can take care of, we'll.
Alright, appreciate you.
Anything else, Clay?
No.
Gene? Denny?
I've got one thing, but I'll raise it when we talk about the moving to compensation.
Okay, okay. Lori?
The only thing I wanna do is I, I wanna say thank you to the council for keeping my sister in your prayers during her illness and keeping our family in your prayers during her passing. I really appreciate you all.
Tammy? Wes? David?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yeah, I received a phone call from a gentleman a couple of weeks ago concerning a blue line stream that we have over off Lilac Road that run ins behind Prestige Estates, said that, uh, it doesn't drain properly, which we have talked about this, Scotty and I did quite a while back, and then we learned it was a blue line stream, so we can't touch it without the Corps being involved, but I told him I would bring it up to see if it's something that we could look into getting the Corps to come in and do a study and see what, if we can go in and take care of it, there's erosion issues there too, so. I don't know what the process is for that, if the council's gotta approve that.
Is it, is that something that we take care of, Tyler, or the Corps take care of?
I guess we would, we could do the work, but the Corps gotta come in and, and tell us what our options are.
Right, so the Corps don't do the work?
No. They did a study on this, the one there that goes across, uh, North Clinton and Harden and through there.
Yeah.
They did the study, and then they presented us with our options for it. They'd probably do the same thing, but I don't know what it costs to have that study done.
I'm not sure.
It costs anything, but.
The, the one we just got presented to us, I'm not sure when it was started, uh, but they notified me just shortly after I took office. And so, it, it was prior to me coming in, and it was what, maybe a month ago, that they finally got it done? So, it's, it's a long drawn-out process with them. They, they did good. They basically just showed us what they thought were the solutions and said, you know, this will probably cost, this will cost this.
Free range to do whatever we tell you. You got free rein to do whatever we tell you?
Yeah, you got free rein to do whatever they've told us to do, so we've looked at some of that, hoping some of the issues, some of the things they're doing at the new Save-A-Lot will lead to some of that.
After you report it like this, do you have to do something with it?
No. They do the study and then-
They make recommendations.
They just make recommendations.
They just make recommendations, but they don't mandate you to-
No, no.
Basically, we were having the issue start with, so, uh, the one on Clinton, they were all, so at the time, the previous mayor had contacted them. Hoping that they would do the work, too.
I understand.
Then they come in and advise us that they would do the study and the recommendations and that part of the job. And if we do, you know, it'll help. If we don't, it's like it didn't happen.
I think they had three recommendations, didn't they? Three different recommendations that we could do. Yeah.
And I want to say that study took like two, two and a half years.
I knew it was wild, it was, you know, good, said late months after I came in that it-
It was very thorough. I mean, they do, like, ten years load, twenty years load, you know, one size for everything, so you'd have to do, so, I'll take that.
So how big a area is it?
Uh, it starts at, uh, municipal truck equipment.
I mean, you'll have start there and-
Yeah, and you go up to the Save-A-Lot, all through the subdivision, everything there.
Their biggest issue, their first recommendation was, they thought there was a pinch point under Harden Street there, where Harden Street, where it crosses under it. That probably is, and then we looked at some down, uh, behind, or was it Tyler, we went and looked, uh, street?
We went to the one right there at Harden Street and looked both ways, but, of course, the first recommendation was to, just to clean it out and give it a clearer path to run, and then the other, the next one was to take the cross drain out from Harden Street and put a box culvert-type drain in it. But when we looked at everything, the size tile that's already there is the same tiles that they just put in for the Save-A-Lot building. So if we increase water flow upstream, then it's gonna create another issue downstream. But we thought, after looking at everything, if we do anything, just cleaning it out would probably help more than-
Dredging, it was part, one of the options, dredging one side of it out.
Yeah.
Is there something that we can do, or we had to hire it out?
We can do it, but the first thing we'd have to do is get easements through there. We don't have an easement, so you can do the work anyway. So we'd have to get that first and go through that process. Most of it is just trees that have grown up over the years and trees, and it's kind of blocking, and before they're washing out, catching everything. It's basically just a lot of clean up that we're wanting to clean through there. But it's nothing that we can do, it's just having the fees to-
There might be some issues where we can do-
You think we could ask Jason for help with that?
Excuse me?
Jason Wusley for help to clean.
We could, I guess.
It's gonna be a lot of hands-on, sounds like.
Yeah.
Be a lot of sawing and stuff. I'm not sure how much, they've got one crew, I know, that does work with chainsaws and stuff, but I don't know that all their crews do.
Yeah, there's got to be certain ones that do. And if he's able to do it, he will, if they can.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
But-
David, or Tyler?
Yeah, we kind of got off on that one. The question I had was, could we get the Corps to look into this other one over off Lilac? Did we have to pay for that study? Do you know? So we just gotta contact them and see if they'll do it, so.
They gave us a dollar amount on what the study was worth. I forget what it was. It was way up there.
Way up there.
It was in hundreds of thousands of dollars, so.
But we weren't out any money to have it done, so I guess one of us can just contact the Corps and ask them, and then, of course, it'll probably be a while.
I can email you the contact that we had.
Okay.
The girl that came and met with you guys is the one that has always corresponded to me since I first came in, and I've got her email and-
I can reach out to her. I've got, okay, so I can take care of that, too.
Okay.
That's all I got for new.
Well, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion. Well, no, let's go. I wrote some notes, I can't read. Okay. Reminder, there'll be a Streets Committee meeting on November twentieth at five P.M. for our next meeting. Planning, zoning, compensation, so we'll talk more about that later.
If we could, Mayor, I think we can, that's a little bit different.
Yeah, that's a different situation.
What that is, they put the compensation for the planning and zoning commission in the wrong place. It's at section one fifty-one, which is relating to a joint planning commission with Litchfield, Clarkson, Kenneville-
Oh, yes.
And the county. That was apparently enacted in nineteen seventy. The county attorney had no knowledge of it. I talked to the city clerk at Clarkson, had no knowledge of it. So this may be something we look at, just to repeal. It's like fifty-four years old, and nothing's ever been done. But anyway, the compensation for planning and zoning is listed under this section. So I would propose moving it to the planning and zoning section where it belongs.
Yeah, I think that will be just as simple as, like, the last one where they had the darn wording in there. I think we can just contact, I can contact the Red, and they can get it moved over to the correct section.
Yeah, I don't think it's any big deal, other than it just needs to be moved, and we, again, can look at this elder ordinance, if we want to even keep it on the books or not.
Yeah, we've not found anybody yet from the city or the county that knows anything about it, so.
Tootie, Mayor, Tootie, were you on City Council in nineteen seventy?
You weren't on nineteen seventy-one, Joe.
Yeah.
Well, Mike could pull up some of the minutes from then, Danny, and see what we can find.
Scotty said he was gonna do that Clarkson, too, if he could locate anything.
I'll pull, I should have time to pull them tomorrow.
Uh, the annual fire department dinner will be December second at six P.M. Please let Lori know as soon as possible if you plan to attend. So she can get Willie a head count. The next planning and zoning comprehensive plan meeting will be November thirteenth, following the regular planning and zoning meetings. I think Tyler said, you think maybe five-thirty-ish, once the comprehensive plan starts.
Yeah, it'll be approximately five-thirty. We're going over chapter five and six, the economic analysis and the environmental conditions.
Okay. And then, we have the first, third annual first responder breakfast. You guys have a flyer on that. If you guys want to come out while they're honoring those people and have some good food. Bear Creek Barbecue, Dana Stewart with Welcome Home Realty Group, and Jeremy Lawson, Grayson County Attorney, have sponsored that. And as it says here, it's for any first responder, police, firefighters, EMS, veterans. So if there are any of those people out there that don't have regular contact with City Hall or something, if you're a veteran or retired officer, firefighter, EMS, something like that, you are welcome to attend. We would love to see you there. Okay.
I do have one more thing, Mayor. Made me think of it with Clayton saying here. And everybody's check that was mailed out to them, there is an invitation to the Christmas party, so please make sure if you plan to attend, to get that back to Jennifer or me, and I can get it to her.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't know if everybody knows this or not, but Kevin's brother was actually in the World Series. Just FYI, participated in it.
Can we get autographs yet?
Football World Series.
Why wasn't you in it?
That's the plan they made to say, I didn't work, and he was playing.
I'm not even gonna say nothing about that.
I'm not going there.
If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
Motion by Clayton. Motion by Tootie.